Good evening. I'm happy to welcome all of my fellow board members and call the May 14th, 2019 School Board Meeting to order, whether you are in attendance here or watching from another location. My colleagues and I are pleased you took time to join us. We appreciate and applaud your commitment to partnering with us in support of our schools, our students, our staff, and our community. While the Board and Brevard Public Schools staff members are fully committed to doing our best to ensure excellence in Brevard Public Schools, we know that our success depends heavily on an engaged and committed community to work alongside us and help us to continually improve. Thank you for being active participants in the process. Pam Rolcall, please.
Mrs. Belford?
Present.
Mrs. Campbell?
Present.
Mrs. Duskovich?
Present.
Mrs. McDougal?
Present.
And Mr. Susan?
Present.
Please join us in a moment of silence as we mourn the loss of Bradley Harden, a student from Pineapple Cove Classical Academy. Thank you. Matt Reed, Assistant Superintendent of Government and Community Relations will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to offer my fellow board members and Dr. Mullins the opportunity to recognize students, staff, or members of the community. Mr. Susan, do you want to start? No, no, no. Ms. Campbell?
The last three weeks have been super busy and lots of awesome things going on as the end of the year often is. On April 24th, we had the School Board Art Show here at ESF, and the students' artwork from kindergarten all the way through 12th grade was truly amazing. And we have some amazing students taught by some amazing teachers. And if you look around the building, I think some of the new winners' artwork has been, is right outside. So take a look. On that Friday, on the 26th, I got the chance, along with Ms. Belford and some of our other assistant superintendents, to be a part of Edgewood Junior/Senior High's Senior Presentation Day. And I know the seniors that presented in my room did some really amazing work, really impressive work. And you can go see some of that on my Facebook page. That night, I got to go to Satellite High School's production of Phantom of the Opera, which I found out was the Brevard County premiere of that musical. Phantom of the Opera has never been done in Brevard before then, and they did a fantastic job. The costumes and the sets may have been my favorite thing ever. So it was really great. Okay. The next Wednesday, our Brevard Schools Foundation did the Take Stock in Children: Graduation and Induction Ceremony. And we had 40, 50, somewhere, seniors who graduated, and their mentors got to walk across the stage with them. And what an impressive group they were. And then we also got to have the induction for the very nervous 7th, 8th, and 9th graders who are waiting to be matched up with their mentors. And I don't think it's too late, because we are, the Brevard Schools Foundation is always looking for mentors. Several of our mentors mentored 2 and 3 and more students. But if you're interested in that, it is a long commitment. But man, the changes in these students' lives was really exciting. So I encourage people to take a look at that.
[inaudible]
Yes, and 100% of that class graduated. They started in the program as 8th or 9th graders, 10th graders, and then the 100% of them graduated. I think that deserves some applause for our program. That Friday was, or excuse me, Thursday afternoon was the Pi Awards, our Partners in Education. Congratulations to Northrop Grumman for being our Brevard Partner of the Year. But some of the ones that were most touching to me, Palm Bay High School. One of our high schools was recognized as a Partner of the Year because of the work they do in Palm Bay Elementary School. And that's the coolest. So excited for our students and teachers giving back to another school. So many churches, Kona Ice was a highlight, even Erna Nixon Park. We looked at each other and said, can a park be a partner? They absolutely are and do so many great things. Retiree Day was awesome last Saturday, recognizing all of our people. I don't want to steal anybody else's thunder. So I'll stop right there.
Thanks, Ms. Campbell. Mr. Susan?
So I had the honor of attending the retiree, what did you call it, luncheon? Luncheon here at ESF. And I would say, being a former teacher, when we used to see a lot of the teachers that retire, an individual was retired, it was usually a small group of teachers that met down at the local, you know, place to grab a couple of beers and some food, and then that was it. And that's like 40 years' worth of their service. So being able to attend this event and showing that how much we truly care about our retirees, and then truly seeing some of the individuals that not only were a big part of my life years ago, but have been a big part of this district, it was just a truly honor to be a part of that luncheon, and seeing the old guard, I would call it, retiring off and what they've done for this district and some of the old stories that they shared with us. I also wanted to say thank you to, or congratulations to Tim Thomas and Derek Coach Smith. They were honored over at the County Commission for resuscitating and saving an individual's life. Many people don't know, but they were, they, in the process, performed CPR for close to nine minutes on an individual who then, later that night, died four times at Nemours and was able to be resuscitated and come back. And then because of their efforts and what they did, he still, he just came back to classes, I think it was last week, and he's now attending school. So a phenomenal, you know, shout-out to Colonel, retired Lieutenant Colonel Tim Thomas and Coach Derek Smith for what they did over at Viera High School. I also wanted to say, and I won't take your thunder because your kid was nominated for it, but I went to the BASSA Awards, and that's our administrative union, if you can call it that. But what they end up doing is, is the BASSA provides scholarships for a lot of the students that, whose parents are also administrators inside the community. And they also are just kind of a way for a lot of the administrators to get together and talk about some of the issues that they have and some of the things and directions that they're going up. And it was a great event. I also attended the Space Coast League of Cities last night, and they laid out our lagoon issues. And if anybody in the, in the, in the audience does not know, it's a lot worse than what we actually think it is. And that is a huge part of, you know, our school system doesn't have a direct tie to it, but that, it was an alarming experience to see what work we have to do as a community. I do want to say, there's a special guest that's getting moved up this, tonight. Ms. Rodriguez from Viera High School is going to get an award. But I did want to take a second while I had this opportunity to say, I have never, and I will say this, heard more positive things about a principal, and she wasn't even the principal yet. I mean, I had people calling me saying that she is doing such an amazing job. She's like one of us. She understands us. She does the, and my usual suspects that drive me crazy in Viera were praising her. So that was a definite positive, on top of the staff that was congligatory when she got appointed. And I also want to say that part of her success is also the individuals that are right beneath her at that school. When did I say Rodriguez? I'm sorry, Robinson. I apologize. I said it wrong. But anyways, Tim Rooney has been there since the school opened. You have a couple of them, Ms. Palermo, other teachers there or administrators that are there that are just amazing. So you have a great staff. I look forward to great things. Ms. Robinson, sorry, I said Rodriguez. And then the next thing is, is I had this great thing. Okay, so Penny, you can't have this check, but this is a $25,000 check that we obtained for Eat My Crust 5K over the, two weekends ago, that's going to go towards rubberizing the track at Viera High School to do what Satellite did. This is the second fundraiser that they did. And I want to give a shout-out to Viera Pizza. They have raised literally $50,000 on their own to rubberize a track and create a community track within Viera. That alone is an amazing accomplishment, and a big shout-out goes to them. I will say that anybody who hasn't and is looking forward to it on May 21st is going to be the meeting over at Viera, for the new Viera Elementary School. That's going to be at Quest at 6 o'clock. And that's going to be the discussion over what possible boundary changes. No middle school discussion, possible boundary changes for the new upcoming elementary school and some of the key components of it. And then I wanted to say one last thing, and I'm sorry to take up all the time. We officially have the largest jobs program now in the state of Florida, where kids, as a part of our jobs program that we have here, are working inside trades, inside municipalities, at the zoo. And it's officially now has more kids a part of it than the entire rest of the state combined. So when other people, so when other people say, what are you guys doing for jobs? What are you guys doing for career and technical? You have a huge, huge plus with that program. And we have kids that work inside of our maintenance. They work in a bunch of other places inside of our schools. And so we have the largest jobs program in the state, and Voc Rehab just let us know that. So with that undone, thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Susan. Ms. Belford?
Thank you, Ms. Duskovich. Tagging on to the discussion of jobs, I didn't get an opportunity to share with my fellow board members, because I didn't want to get ahead of another elected body's vote on an issue. But our Port Commissioner, Commissioner Robin Haddaway, has been working on a concept that would create a junior port ambassador program. And she kind of pitched it to the commission in January, and it didn't go very far. And so we brainstormed. She pulled together a committee of folks, myself, Charles Parker, a couple of students, some, some other folks from the community, and really brainstormed how we could make this work. We presented to the Port Authority last month, and I'm proud to say that not only did they approve the program, but they actually wanted it to be larger than what we were proposing, because we were trying to keep costs down on it. And the reason that this is significant, the junior port ambassador program is basically going to take multiple students from each of our high schools within the port district, take them out to the port, and they'll be out there for about a day at a time. They've kind of broken it down into their business lines. And these students will be exposed to all of the different job opportunities that exist at the port. They will then be tasked with working on kind of a PR campaign for job opportunities at the port. And so the hope is that they can go back to their school, share this information with their peers, and we can begin to align our career and technical education opportunities with job opportunities out at the port, so that both the port knows what we offer. I did, when I spoke with the port commissioners, I did share our career and technical education programs and the programs that we're doing through Brevard Achievement Center and Employee shared that information with them, and really encouraged them that this be the first step in our conversation. That I think the junior port ambassador program is a good, good first start, but we got to keep it going. We got to really make sure that we are aligning those opportunities with our students' needs and qualifications. So I'm hopeful that that's going to continue to grow our awesome pipeline of job opportunities that we're creating in Brevard. And thank you, Mr. Susan, for all of your work in that area, and certainly your support of me going out and sharing that information, too.
I think most of the credit goes to Jenna Schultz, the career and technical team, and also our vocational rehab group that's back there. I mean, I just get to cheerlead for it.
Absolutely. Yes, thank you for cheerleading for it. Also had the opportunity to attend the elementary, I see some of my, my folks here from Coquina, Kim Harris is here. And so we had what we call in the north end, the Elementary Try School Concert. And I just have to tell you, they take three schools of students. It is Coquina, Apollo, and Imperial Estates. And these students practice completely separate throughout the school year. They work on their strings and their choral skills. And they come together on this one night with very little collaborative practice and perform phenomenally well. They all gather at the Titusville High School Auditorium and put on a great show. I was incredibly proud of the students. They all looked amazing. They played beautifully. So many thanks to not only those students and their parents for supporting them in those efforts, but also to all of the teachers who have worked to get them to the point that they were prepared for that effort, because it certainly was impressive, and we appreciate them. Also, we, every year, the City of Titusville, and I think it's the only municipality that does it, but City of Titusville does an award ceremony for our students in the north end. And Dr. Sullivan and Ms. Klein were there with me, and I'm trying to think if there was anyone else from the district there. But the city does this awards recognition ceremony every single year, and they recognize students from private schools, charter schools, and of course, all of our area schools. And the really neat thing about this particular awards program is you, you tend to see students getting recognized that may not be recognized for some of the traditional awards. They may not be the honor roll kids. They may not be the kids that are, you know, getting all of the recognition at their schools, but they, they get the opportunity to get up on stage and be recognized as scholars. So congratulations to all of them, to all of the school teams that got them there and supported them, and obviously to the students for making great choices. And I'm almost done, I promise. Dr. Mullins and I had the opportunity today to attend the Space Coast Junior/Senior Hunch Recognition Ceremony. And if you all are not familiar with the Hunch Program, it is phenomenal. It stands for, I lost my cheat sheet, "High School Students Uniting with NASA to Create Hardware." Did I get that right?
Yep.
Woo-hoo, okay. So if you have not seen that program, these students come together, they work, the students that participated were a part of the STEAM Academy at Space Coast, and they work with various mentors in the community, and they develop some phenomenal projects. So what happens is NASA basically says, we have these challenges that we need to address on the space station, and we want you all to figure out how to do it. So just to give you some examples of some of the things, they were asked to develop a spare tool pouch for the space station, collapsible sleeping quarters, food packaging, a radiation protection jacket, a washing machine, because they have learned that while they can send clean clothes to the space station right now, when we start looking at Mars or the moon, that's not going to be a feasible thing. So they have to figure out some way to clean clothes in space. And then this one, I'm going to read right from the sign, because I'm never going to get it right otherwise. "Augmented Reality Object Identification Annotation Tools." And, and that particular group of students, turns out, there was no one locally that could support them in their effort, because it dealt with software. And so they actually had to have NASA team members from across the country remote in with them to support them in development of their project, if that's not mind-blowing. So huge congratulations to the students at Space Coast that have been working on this project. They were incredibly impressive. And obviously, a huge thanks to the business partners that made it possible. Art was there from Knights Armament. He is, you can tell that he loves supporting those students, and we appreciate that, as well as all the work with NASA. So that's it.
Can I say something?
Thank you, Ms. Belford. Sure, Mr. Susan.
I just wanted to say that NASA Hunch Program, it's not just NASA, but it's our actual astronauts at the International Space Center who have issues with something, and they ask these kids to brainstorm it, produce it, and then they actually make it, and it goes back up. For instance, last year, they needed a locker to put a lot of their stuff inside while they were up there. So they literally had a team develop that. And instead of paying Northrop Grumman $60,000 to machine it and do all that stuff, they did it inside the NASA Hunch, and then they sent it up with their signatures all over it. So each one of those things that she said is identifying an issue that those astronauts are having problems with up at the International Space Station. So just some phenomenal stuff that we never had an opportunity to do when we were kids, that's for sure.
Thank you, Mr. Susan. Ms. McDougal?
Thank you, Ms. Duskovich. I was lucky on May 3rd to attend at Freedom Seven Patriot Day, which is something they used to do a long time ago, and they just brought back. And it's a celebration of community leaders, and there were seven leaders that were celebrated, and one of them happened to be Dr. Mullins at the time. So he was also given a special pen and award. And they had a wonderful choir singing. It was just a lovely presentation. And I think what was most outstanding for me is each student had people that they were honoring, and they wrote them all themselves. So we had these little kindergarteners up there, very articulate. I was very impressed. And it was really wonderful. And one of the things that came out of this meeting is Freedom Seven is an IB school, and they didn't have a mascot. So the kids all voted on a mascot, and they now have an eagle as the mascot for their school. I also went, during Teacher Appreciation Week, I wanted to visit some of my schools. And I went to Saturn Elementary and helped pass out goodie bags during the middle of the day to our teachers. And I didn't realize how many teachers there were there. It was fun. It was great to see everybody. I had a chance to talk with them. That was a lot of fun. Also, the next day, I went to McNair Middle School. They had an award ceremony. I went with Dr. Novelli. He and I shook a whole bunch of wonderful students' hands for the awards they got for that year of different grades. Also, I wanted to, went to Cape View, and I want to give a shout-out to the Rising Tide Restaurant there at the port. They catered lunch for the teachers at Cape View, which was phenomenal lunch. And thank you very much to the Rising Tide for supporting our teachers there at Cape View. I want to let people know that it is a little bit far off, but think about it. If you're a golfer, the Brevard School Foundation is having their golf tournament. It's a fundraiser. And you can putt a contest with one of their school board people who shows up. So I know Mr.'s, you're not going, but I think...
No, I'm going to be there. I'm just not any good.
Gary Shiffrin in the podcast?
Yes. So I know that several of us will be there, and that's another fundraiser that's really...
I use a sledgehammer. And I'm at 40 feet away, and anybody that can beat me wins an award. And Gary Shiffrin went down last year. So those of you guys that know Gary in the back, I beat him. And I made it posted inside my local, where we live at together in the thing, so.
I also wanted to go ahead and talk about the fundraising abilities that are happening at Coco High School for their course to go to Carnegie Hall in October. So far, they have raised $30,000. It's a good start. They have a long ways to go. So we are certainly looking for donations. And if you want to make a donation to help the choir get there, yeah, you can make them to Coco and put in the memo part for the Carnegie Hall, New York City in October. Also, keep your eyes posted. Another fundraiser that is in the works is at Coco Playhouse. They're going to have a performance going on there, so keep your eyes open. I think that's going to be coming up soon. But that's kind of what's happening to help raise funds for our Coco students to go to New York City. And I think that's it for me.
Thank you, Ms. McDougal. Dr. Mullins?
Thank you. I'd like to, like to start by celebrating really... I'd like to start by celebrating really Brevard Public Schools as an organization. I had the opportunity to attend the United Way Award Ceremony a couple of weeks ago, and Brevard Public Schools continues to be the third-largest organization raising money for our local United Way campaign, only behind Publix and Harris. In addition to that, Brevard Public Schools, we're the 10th or 11th largest district in the state of Florida, but we're the second-largest fundraising campaign in the state for United Way. So, we just have a tremendously generous and gracious staff across our organization that continue to invest in our local United Way. Want to say a thank you to Florida Today. They hosted our Top Scholars Breakfast a couple of weeks ago. It was a beautiful morning, a wonderful event celebrating our seniors. I tell you, I felt like a slacker in the room. Our kids across our district are so impressive, and our future is in good hands. We celebrated some amazing kids, just a snapshot of our great kids across the district. I had the opportunity to run a 5K with the Kiwanis of Cocoa Beach, and I wanted to do that because they actually did that event to raise money for our local schools in Cocoa Beach. I will let you know, I did not break any records, but I did finish, and I did finish running. So, it was great to be a part of our Cocoa Beach community and raise funds for our schools. Last week, going along, Titusville recognizes students. I attended the Palm Bay Rotary Student Awards Ceremony. Our Rotary of Palm Bay has been hosting that event, celebrating all students across the entire Palm Bay area for over 40 years. They've been hosting that luncheon and recognizing our students. The neat thing about that event is the student gets to select a teacher to bring with them to be recognized as part of the reason why they are the student that they are. So, it was a wonderful celebration of not only our students, but also the teachers that have made an amazing impact on their lives. So, thank you to our Palm Bay Rotary. I wanted to tag on to the Hunch Program this morning and also let our community know, Merritt Island High School, and I'm not going to get this right, it's either staying bod or staying sad, or anyway, our kids have, they have created a satellite that is going to be launched here in the next few weeks. So, I don't know when. It's top secret. I think we get like 24-hour notice, but our kids, again, designed a satellite that will be launched with our... So, NASA is an amazing partner across our schools, along with our other technology industries. So, that's exciting that we're going, Brevard Public Schools is going into space.
The only one ever in the country to launch a satellite.
That's right.
Merritt Island.
I'm just checking my notes. I want to close with just a huge recognition and acknowledgement of our business partners across our community. They help, they came, they come alongside and do amazing things for us. Over a million dollars in dollars and in-kind services for our schools across our district. But last week particularly, business partners across our district helped us celebrate the tremendous assets we have in our teachers through Teacher Appreciation Week. So, first, I want to thank our business partners. Edible Arrangements has helped us particularly celebrate teachers across the district with the shout-outs through Facebook. We had hundreds of shout-outs to teachers across our district, and we've been pulling names to award different teachers with an edible arrangement. So, thank you to that business partner. But just a huge thank you for the teachers across our great district, and I think if all of us took a moment and reflect on the teachers in our own lives who have helped shape and frame and make us into the individuals we are today. So, I got to do a shout out to Ms. Ferguson, one of my high school teachers who I cherish. Don't know where she is today, but if you're out there, Ms. Ferguson, I appreciate your contribution to make me the person I am today.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. Ms. McDougall has one more she'd like to share.
I'm so sorry. Thank you. I wanted to remind people about Tropical Elementary's, the kindergarten class that has the kindness symbol. They are trying to reach 10,000 signatures. They have 3,500 and so many. All across, they have every single continent, somebody from every single continent except Antarctica. So, they are counting on our public to please go to their website and sign on the kindness petition because they would like it to be a national, bring it before our Congress to have a kindness. It's a great symbol if you haven't seen it. Next time, I'm going to have a T-shirt, and I'll wear that. But it's a wonderful symbol, and please, if you haven't signed, think about signing.
Thank you, Ms. McDougall. Microphone's trying to turn off on me. I will take Dr. Mullins' lead and go ahead and give a shout out to my teacher, and that's Ms. Evelyn Skremetta, who worked for our district for 40-something years, I believe. She was my middle school history teacher two years in a row. Huge impact on my life. She was a mentor to me through some very difficult years in my youth, and she stepped in and filled a great role. I kept in touch with her all these years, moved away, got married, took jobs in other states, and wrote back to her probably 30 years ago and told her what a role she played in my life. And then, when I moved back here in 2002, I think, I looked her up. She lives a mile from my house, and we've had a great relationship since I've been back, and it's been fun to be colleagues now in a certain sense. So, Evelyn Skremetta, to me, is a hero. From there, I'm going to play now off of your running that you just did, and I'm going to challenge the entire board to mark your calendars right now, May 2nd, 2020. It's not a 5K. We can do it, guys. We can do it. Your phone does go that far up, Mr. Susan. Running Zone, this will be the fourth year, I think. They do, they do a full marathon for our students. Wait, 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 we're not doing the full marathon. Listen to me. We have three, listen to me, you guys, don't jump the gun. We'll get into the good part. Listen to me. It's over 10 weeks. Our students, they had 3,000 students participate this year. They run 26.2 miles over 10 weeks, and then we all meet on May 2nd, which we met this past weekend, and this is the second year I've joined them, and it is so fun. And you run the last mile together. 36 of our schools were represented this past week, and they show up as teams with their shirts from their school, and they run as a team. They run that final mile. It ends right around the track. They get popsicles, and I just stand at the end and just, I mean, these little kids, they are dying coming around that corner. The sun's beating down on them, and I'm like, "You can do it." And they're like, "I can." And they just take off and run. It is, it's wonderful. And so, I want to thank Running Zone for putting this on at their own cost. There is free to every single student and participant. It's costing them upwards of $25,000, she said when I was speaking to her about it, to put this on for our community and for our students. And they're doing it just as a service for good health within our community. So, May 2nd, 2020, I told her I was going to challenge our entire board to be there and do that one mile with our students as, and honestly, we should do the 26.2 miles. And they said you can track it walking or whatever over the 10 weeks, and we can report that we did a marathon as a school board and superintendent. I'm challenging you, too, sir. Don't look like you're not, you're not part of that.
26 miles.
Okay.
It seems like two days to get to 26 miles.
You've got 10 weeks to do it. Okay, next, I mean, satellites. We've got kids putting satellites in space. We have three students from West Shore that have made it to the final round of the Mousetrap Car Grand Prix, which may sound like nothing to you all, but they are going to Monaco, the city-state, it's not a country, it's a city-state of Monaco, being paid for by FIT to complete in the finale. That's Matt Kish, Aubrey Tegland, and Abigail Watson. They have created some amazing mousetrap car that is so amazing that it's made it to the final finals in Monaco. They're getting a tour of the palace. I mean, this is, this is like stuff movies is made of. So, congratulations to those three students from West Shore.
Ms. Duskevich, I think if I recall, they actually get a VIP...
Like tea with the prince or something?
Meeting with the prince. Yeah, they're actually meeting with the prince of Monaco.
We've got some amazing things going on in our district, that is for sure. A shout out to the group that puts together the Space Coast Prayer Breakfast every year. It's on the National Annual, or the National...
Day of Prayer.
Day of Prayer. I know Carol Wheatley heads that up, so I want to give her a thank you, and I think she has a team, but I'm not sure who the other people are that put it together. But this year specifically, I attended it, a few others on our board, and Dr. Mullins did, and Loretta Dozier gave a prayer that was specific for our students, our teachers, our employees, and each of our school board members by name. And it was, it was very moving, and so, I just wanted to say thank you to her and for that, that whole group for praying for our school district because we need all the prayers we can get. Last, yep, last, I'm not going to hold you hostage forever. I did Duskevich Duty Day last Friday at the Hoover Cafeteria. I was cafeteria worker, hairnet and all, and it was fabulous. So, a huge shout out to Lori Hammer. She is the cafeteria manager there at Hoover, and her staff, Tresha, Maria, Tracy, Bernice, Ruth Ellen, and Pandora. Each one of those ladies is from a different country, and each one of those ladies loves their job. I have never seen, I have worked through high school and college in restaurants. I was a waitress and a cashier at Kentucky Fried Chicken. I have seen some dirty kitchens. Our kitchen at Hoover was spotless, immaculate. I thought I would leave there feeling dirty, like I'd been around food, washing dishes, but I didn't. It was so clean back there, and those ladies are meticulous with the food that they prepare, and the food was good. You're allowed to take a break, and you can make a meal and go back to the break room, which I did. I ate the school food, and it was fabulous. So, great job to our cafeteria staff, and that is it. We will get on with our meeting. Okay. Brings us to the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Mullins?
Ms. Duskevich and members of the board, on this evening's agenda, we have administrative staff recommendations, one recognition, 32 consent items, two action items, and four information items. You also have the yellow supplemental agenda, which are changes made to the agenda since being released to the public on Tuesday, May 7th, 2019. Item A7 on administrative staff recommendations, F19 on reappointment nominations of support personnel and school safety security specialists for the 19-20 school year, and item G43 on purchasing solicitations received revisions. An information item for the code of student conduct was added and subsequently deleted.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Motion by Ms. Belford, second by Ms. McDougall. Is there any discussion? Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins, will you please let us know about the administrative staff recommendations?
There are 11 persons on this item, agenda item for the board to consider.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Mr. Susan, second by Ms. Belford. Any discussion? Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins?
First, I'd like to congratulate, welcome and congratulate Ms. Tiffany Fleeger on her reclassification and transfer from the position of Assistant Principal at Holland Elementary to the principal of, to the position of principal at Stevenson Elementary School. Congratulations, Ms. Fleeger.
Thank you, Mrs. Klein, Dr. Mullins, board. Thank you so much for recognizing and believing in my leadership. This evening, I have with me my family. They have always been my number-one supporters, and to that, I am so thankful. It means more to me than they even know. I've been blessed throughout my career in Brevard to have been supported by many, many individuals, too many that I can't even mention them tonight. I'd also like to thank Mrs. Allison and the faculty and staff at Holland for supporting me through my leadership journey and for always finding the opportunity to make a positive impact in the lives of our students, always. As I move into the principal position at Stevenson Elementary, I pledge my commitment, my continued commitment to excellence, our community, and growth. Thank you.
Next, we congratulate and recognize Ms. Kimberly Harris on her reclassification and transfer from the position of Assistant Principal at Kokina Elementary to the position of principal at Anderson Elementary. Congratulations, Ms. Harris.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins and the board. I brought with me tonight my cheerleaders, my family, my in-laws, Joan and Charlie Harris, my husband, James, two of my three boys, Matthew and Steven. My other son, Andrew, and my parents are watching online tonight. So, I have, also, I have a lot of people that I want to thank for getting me to this point and supporting me. Jennifer Brockwell, Jennifer Clark, Susan Mulcrone, Blair Lovelace, Marilyn Sylvester, and Mrs. Klein. Thank you for your support and guidance. I am honored to be part of the Anderson community. I look forward to working with the faculty, staff, William, and the students and families at Anderson. Thank you very much.
Also goes out to Ms. Janine Jost on her reclassification and transfer from the position of Assistant Principal at Palm Bay Elementary to the position of principal at Sunrise Elementary.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins and school board members. For me, tonight is a night of gratitude. There are so many people that I need to express my thanks to as well. First of all, to the Sunrise community and to Mr. Pitchard and to Ms. Campione and the teachers and staff there. They have just inundated me with emails of thanks and welcome, and I'm just so appreciative. To my parents, I have my dad here with me tonight. They instilled the values in me that allow me to do the work that I do every single day. So, I'm very thankful to the way that they raised me and for always being there for me. To my husband, Scott, and my three boys, they can't be here tonight because he's out running around doing BPI, Brevard Public Schools activities for the boys. But thank you to them for sharing their time with me, to the community, to allow me to do the work of service that I love to do. And last but not least to, this is the hard part, to my Palm Bay Elementary School family. I have so many people here supporting me tonight. They were by my side for the past three years. To my mentors, I have Mrs. Passanese and Ms. Glover, Mr. Maul, and my PMPT, you know who you are, Dr. Wright. I know she's enjoying retirement. She's off on her trips right now, but you all mean the world to me. Mrs. Woodbury, I don't know what I'll do without you, but we'll be in touch. So, thank you all very much. I know it's going to be a great joyride at Sunrise, and I'm very, very honored. Thank you.
Next, congratulations to Ms. Holly Zander on her reclassification and transfer from the position of Assistant Principal at Palm Bay Magnet High to the position of principal at Bayside High School. Congratulations.
Thank you. I just wanted to take a moment to thank everyone at Palm Bay Magnet High School. I know they're not here today, but it's really been a privilege to work with some of the hardest-working, dedicated people I've had the privilege to work with. I wanted to thank the board and Dr. Mullins and Dr. Sullivan for giving me this opportunity to go back to Bayside. I have been there, I was there for 11 years when I first moved to Brevard County, so it'll be nice to go back to some people I know and to meet some that I don't know yet. I want to thank my family and friends that are here today, especially my son, who's going to be a ninth grader at Bayside. So, this is going to be exciting for all of us. Thank you.
Now, we want to congratulate Ms. Heather Smith on her reclassification from the position of 10-month Assistant Principal at Vieira High School to the position of 12-month Assistant Principal at Vieira High School. Congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins, and to the board. I have my husband here with me, so thank you for all the craziness that has been the last few years and sharing me with all of BPS and all our students. I would like to thank Sarah Robinson for giving me this opportunity. I am looking forward to working with you. You're an amazing leader, and I know you're going to do great things. I would like to thank Mr. Alba, there you are, for bringing me to Vieira in the first place and giving me this opportunity and continuing to support me even though you're in a new position. I appreciate everything that you've done for me and for Vieira. I would like to thank Mr. Novelli. Thank you for your support in this journey that we've had this year at Vieira, and you've made so much of an impact on everything that has happened this year. that has happened this year at our school and I thank you for that. And that's all. Thank you.
Next, we congratulate and recognize Dr. Nalefra Marshall on her transfer from the position of principal at West Melbourne Elementary School for Science to the position of principal at Tropical Elementary. Congratulations.
Thank you. I want to thank Dr. Mullins, Mrs. Klein, and Tara Harris and the board for giving me this opportunity. I am going to miss my family at WMSS. I will always be a shooting star, but now I'm going to be a trailblazer and I brought them with me along with the special man in my life. So I'm ready to get going with Ms. Worley. We're going to be a dynamic team.
Next, congratulations also to Dr. Donna O'Brien on her transfer from the position of Director of ESE Program Support to the position of principal at Myla Elementary.
Thank you so much, Dr. Mullins and the board, for this opportunity. It's time for me to get back to my roots with kids and students, kids and students, same thing, and teachers. Very excited to take this opportunity and be a Myla manatee. I would like to have a big shout out to Jane Klein for believing in my leadership. I'm excited to work with her and her leading and learning team. I have to give a big shout out to my ESE Program Support family. It's been an amazing six years. They're an amazing group of experts and I will miss all of them dearly. To my new Myla family, very excited to get to know them, to work with them, get to know the community and be a part of the Merritt Island Launch area and the manatees that surround it. And last but not least, I have my best friend and husband, David, here, who's happy to support this new adventure. So thank you so much and this opportunity.
All right. We thought our announcements were long. We've got one more. Congratulations to Ms. Sarah Robinson on her position change from the position of Acting Principal at Viera High School to now the official role of principal of Viera High School. Congratulations, Ms. Robinson.
Good evening, Dr. Mullins and school board members. Thank you so much for this opportunity to allow me to continue to serve the Viera community. It has been my privilege to work there for the past three years as Assistant Principal for Curriculum and Acting Principal for the past six months. And I've had the opportunity to work with some of the best staff, parents, community that I could even imagine. And I'm so excited to continue to work with them and continue the tradition of excellence that Viera is known for. I do have to thank the leaders in the room who have helped me grow and have mentored me, especially Mr. Alba, who is the reason I even became an administrator to begin with and is the way he's coached me and helped grow me into the leader that I am. I also specifically want to thank Mr. Novelli, Ms. Bowman, and Dr. Sullivan, who helped us through this process as Acting Principal this year and were constantly there to guide me and advise me and truly mentor me through this time. I can't say enough about the wonderful staff that I work with, from the teachers to the support staff, to the leadership, to the admin team there. And I'm so excited to continue to work there and to see what the future holds for Viera High School. Thank you.
It's time to move on to our presentation. Dr. Mullins.
We've talked about our kids launching things into outer space. I heard a reference to, I think, a shining star, one of our schools. But next, now we have the opportunity to recognize truly a shining star among our staff and I'm privileged to have Ms. Su Han as part of our senior cabinet. Tonight, we want to recognize our Assistant Superintendent of Facility Services, Ms. Su Han, for being named one of the top 10 Leaders of the Year for 2019 by the American Public Works Association across the United States. These leaders are recognized for outstanding career service achievements in public works. Ms. Han was nominated by the Florida Chapter. Presenting tonight's award is Mr. Jim Proci, City Manager of Anna, Texas. Mr. Proci.
Thank you, Superintendent and Board. This is a tough act to follow. I just love the energy in this room tonight. It's been fantastic. My children are a product of your school system and one of them is a civil engineer today in the Dallas area. And my son is a senior at the University of North Texas. He's an honor student there in computer science. So, but I'm thankful of these folks who planted that seed many years ago before I-
We've got lots of civil engineering and computer science job opportunities here in Brevard, so you-
I'll let them know. So, but tonight I'm here representing the American Public Works Association. You've set the table for me quite, quite well, so I appreciate that. I'll get to the point here. I'm honored to be here to present this because, just to give you some of the history, the American Public Works Association started in the year 1960 and today there were an association of 30,000 members across North America. Those, these are the people that build all the infrastructure, all the things that you do every day, the roads, the drainage, the utilities, the schools, the buildings. And this top 10 award is the most coveted award of all the awards. It's something that many are nominated but few receive. And in the history of our association, this, this year marks 600 people since 1960 that have been awarded with this. I personally sit on the selection committee and I have to tell you, that's a lot of hard work because there's a lot of deserving people out here that step to the, to the plate and get this opportunity to be considered for it as an honor in and of itself. But one of the things I wanted to recognize before we get to the point here is the, the folks that are here tonight that have come to support Sue. I just, I just wanted to do this. I think just kind of the energy of the group here. If Sue was your mentor, raise your hand.
Wow.
If Sue was your teacher, raise your hand. If Sue was somebody that you worked for or with, raise your hand. Right? If Sue was your friend, raise your hand. If Sue your family, raise your hand. This is a testament of who Sue is and how blessed you are to have her amongst you. She is a friend to me, to my family. She's, she's the reason, my, my daughter actually is a civil engineer. When my daughter was nine years old, she goes, "What do you want to be when you grow up?" She goes, "I want to be an engineer." I said, "Oh, so you're going to follow in the footsteps of, of, you know, what I do." Because I built bridges and roads and stuff. I worked for Sue for a very long time. "No, no, no, no. I don't want to be like you. I want to be like her." And she's quite successful doing that and I'm very proud of her. But Sue was her inspiration and her mentor as well. We originally met in 1997 and I think the first time I met her is I actually ran into her on a ba-, I was on a basketball court and she was coming from the racquetball court and I think I about tackled her trying to save a loose ball back in the days when we were both a lot younger, can run a lot faster and jump higher, but that, not so much anymore. But in 1997, she came to work where I was working. I'm a former resident of Brevard County for about 30 years before I went adventuring around the country. And she is the reason I'm here today and I have been, I attribute my successes to her as well. I'm a city manager in one of the highest growth areas in the country in North Texas. And, and everything I know about our business, I learned from this woman and I appreciate her. And she is a good friend and she's touched many, not just the folks here in the room, but the hundreds that she has taught through the programs. And if you haven't read the application, I'll, I'll see that you get a copy of it because it's well worth a read just to see how blessed you are to have her amongst you. I want to recognize the Florida Chapter President, J.D. Dunton. He's here to represent the state of Florida and I appreciate him coming here. There's people from all over the place, some of our former workers. And John Bonjovi and his wife are citizens from, that we served in our, when we worked in another agency. So thank you for coming out and the rest of the friends and family. I so do appreciate it. This is a homecoming for me. So I'm, I'm having a great time here. But with that, I just wanted to say one more thing and then we'll get to the point. Sue has touched so many lives in cities, in counties, and now in the school board. And I think she's found her purpose here amongst you because this, this couldn't be more rewarding for me to see this and, and to be asked to come here to present this award here tonight to her. She is the definition of a servant leader, always putting herself before everybody else. And, and there's one thing I'm not supposed to say, but I'm going to say it ever. Of all the people that have ever received this award, she had, was the only one had gotten the, the perfect score.
Wow.
The highest ever.
Highest ever.
In 60, 60 years, right?
In 60 years.
600 applications, 30,000 members a year?
600, 600 people have received the award. Highest ever.
Perfect.
So-
Caroline, did you get all that?
No, I'll probably get thrown off the board for that, so.
We're not televised or anything.
Please. So, and, and as the chair mentioned about her hero, Sue is our hero. And, and with that, I asked Sue to come up and this is quite the plaque. It's very heavy. To issue you the top 10 APWA Public Works Leader of the Year for noteworthy achievement in the field of public works and adherence to the highest standards of professional conduct, Sue Provost Han, Assistant Superintendent Facility Services, Brevard Public Schools, has been selected the top 10 Public Works Leader of the Year awarded by the American Public Works Association, May 2019.
Thank you so much. Thanks to everybody. I, I'm rarely at a loss for words, but I'm struggling a little bit here. I want to thank my friend Jim for coming all the way from Texas to present this for me. Jim and I have worked together for many years. We've known each other a couple of decades and have just traveled the life of public service together. And I've learned so much from Jim and I've learned so much from my public works family. Many of the folks here have supported me in various endeavors throughout the years and, and my new BPS family, everyone has just been tremendous. And I want to tell the board and superintendent and my, my folks here at Brevard Public Schools what an honor and a privilege it is to be part of this family. Came to you four and a half years ago, newbie to facilities, newbie to the school system, and everyone just has been so kind and caring and just tremendous to work with. And we really just do good work here, like we do in, in public works in the cities and the counties. It's, it's a life of public service. And Jim read my name on the plaque as Susan Provost Han and Provost is my family name. And I wanted to, sorry, honor my dad, who, who really showed me the value of being a public servant at a very young age and just has always demonstrated good ethical leadership and the idea of public service. And I'm, I'm a product of my family and a product of our teachers. I grew up in New York State and I can still tell, you know, Ms. Nancy Prather, my English teacher, was my hero then and so impactful. So I'm honored to kind of come full circle and back to the school district and serve the community in that way. And the last thing I want to do before I relinquish the microphone is to thank my husband, Murray. Most folks aren't sure that Murray exists.
Thank you.
But he does. And we've been married 26 years and he has been there all the way for me. He's been dressed in a dog suit. He's been out during hurricanes and I'm sure you'll see him at some point because he's always been so supportive of me. And so thank you to my APWA friends, my family, folks that I've worked with over the years. Just, it's, it's an honor to be here and thank you very much.
Would it be appropriate to invite the chair and the superintendent down for, or all of you down for a photo?
Amy, that's you too.
Matt has spoken.
Come on, Amy. Pam?
Need more people in the picture.
My pleasure.
the top 10 Public Works Leaders of the Year. You could change that because she got a perfect score to the Sue Han, Sue Provost Han, Public Works Leader of the Year Award. Just a suggestion. You got the guy? Do we have enough for a forum? Can you guys make that motion and do it?
I'm on the national committee and we are reviewing the, the standards this year. So she set the new standard.
There it is. Congratulations, Sue.
Thank you. I do have one question, sir. Do you have John Bonjovi working for you? Is that what you said?
It's Bonjovi.
Bonjovi.
It's John Bonjovi.
I'd like to miss you. You're like, did he say John Bonjovi?
It might be John Bonjovi, just trying to cover up.
Undercover. Okay, let's see. We are now to the public comments portion of our meeting. Though school board policy 0169.1 limits to 30 minutes, the portion of the meeting during which the public is invited to participate and provide public comment, the policy further provides that this time limit may be extended by a vote of the board. We have five public comments. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. We have a clock in front of me to help you keep track of your time. When your time is over, you'll be asked to stop and allow the next speaker his or her turn. Always keep in mind that reasonable decorum is expected at all times and your statement should be directed to the board chairman. The chairman may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement when time is up, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Should an individual not observe proper etiquette, the chairman may request the individual leave the meeting. Let's all encourage an environment appropriate for our children who may be present or watching from home. Let's begin with our first three speakers. Carly Hudson, Anna Wilder, and Anthony Calucci.
Am I good? Okay. Hey, as you all know, my name is Carly Hudson. I'm a senior at Melbourne High School. It is the end of the year, it's the last board meeting before graduation. So I kind of just wanted to go over my high school experience with Brevard Public Schools as I have been here since kindergarten. The first thing I wanted to bring up was, did you all know that Melbourne High School has a one to two week waiting period to have a meeting with a guidance counselor? And when you do sign up to speak with one, you're turned away at the desk if it's anything but about stuff for a class. If you have a mental health issue, issues with your college application, anything and questions about your major, possible career, technical education, anything like that, you're turned away at the door. We really are only allowed to have meetings if it is something pertinent to our classes and I think that that should be touched upon in future years. I was thankful to have, had built great relationships with all my guidance counselors. I was, I was able to stop in during lunch periods, but I'm not sure that's the case for all of the students. So just something to look into. I'd also like you guys to reevaluate the career education classes that is required for each Brevard Public High Schooler to take. It's usually given during freshman year, which I think it should end up being given during junior year because freshman year I wanted to be an interior designer. And let me tell you, that is not anything what I want to do now. I'm looking at going into the medical field. So that just might be more helpful for all of our students. Instructional delivery was also a really big issue for me in all of my schooling here. In elementary school, I was a very gifted child where I was given worksheets to keep me busy. Middle school, the same- Middle school, the same thing, worksheets, worksheets, worksheets. And now I'm here in high school thinking it would be different and I was brought with more busy work. If you guys saw the literal stack of busy work I had this semester, it would make anybody puke. I just am brought home with just copious amounts of worksheets that don't really engage my learning where it should be on the high school level. We have a lot of teachers that resort to that because they are filled with so many other paperwork issues. They have to do PGP, all the different things like that, where if they had that second planning period where they had originally, maybe we could have some different, like, lesson plans other than worksheets. Trying to just go through this quickly. Oh, and science classes was a big deal for me. I love science and we never get the chance to have in-depth, hands-on labs at the expense of the schools, but at the expense of the teachers. A lot of our teachers have to pay out of pocket for every labs that we have to do and their budgets never can hardly ever cover a hundred and twenty students' worth, like, of materials. So I just think that's kind of crazy that we're losing the chances to have really fun, engaging science labs because of costs. And then the last thing I wanted to touch on, I know I'm out of time. Melbourne High School still wears different colors to graduation, male versus female. Males are forced to wear green, females are forced to wear white. I don't think that is any, the least bit accommodating, especially when you have students that are in between or wanting to be a different color and they aren't able to wear what they can express. And expression also goes along with our decoration of our graduation caps. We are one of the only schools that does not allow decorations of graduation caps. I think that that's one of the most simple things that you could give your seniors, just to put USF on the top of your cap for graduation. And Melbourne High School consistently, even with a fifteen-hundred-word proposal with reasons and et cetera, to go through, still is not allowed. Just certain things like that would really enhance our high school experience, especially with graduation in the end. And for that still not to be passed, I feel like that's something that the board could step up and fight for, for our seniors at Mel. But besides that, I really enjoyed my time in the schooling. I'm going to miss it and hopefully I'll be sitting up there one day with you guys. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson. We appreciate your continued involvement in the educational process in Brevard. Anna Wilder?
Hello, good evening. My name is Anna Wilder and I am currently a senior at West Shore Junior Senior High School. Just to let you know a little bit about me, I was this year's editor-in-chief of my high school yearbook. I was also the vice president of my student government association and I ran the Florida Scholastic Press Association's Spring Convention as the state chairwoman. I take pride in my accomplishments as a lot of what I do is because of the success that I've had in school. I would not be standing here today with the confidence to stand up and talk about one of the most pressing and easily fixable issues if I were not encouraged by my mentors and teachers who encouraged me to take my spills and expand my knowledge to accomplish great things. I cannot even begin to describe everything that needs to change, yet instead I'm going to focus on this main issue and how its solution could create multiple opportunities for a better world tomorrow. To get right to the point, it is a general understanding that the respect and pay of teachers in the United States is at an all-time low. Spanning from a national view, when narrowing down to Florida and then Brevard County, I'm surprised to say that it gets even worse. The average pay for teachers is thirty-nine thousand to fifty-three thousand dollars and yet Brevard's average is forty-three thousand dollars. I ask you, how do you expect these individuals who have gone to college, gotten a degree, and worked to attain a admirable profession to then make barely seven thousand dollars more than the average United States garbage collector? Proper education is needed to fix this world's problems that we face in the world today. And we are asking these teachers to inspire and educate the next generation with this little pay? For single mothers, it's almost unattainable. And what about people with college debt? I mean, I know I'm worried about it. The ones who are working more than just one job to pay the bills and barely getting by with what they have is almost embarrassing. If teachers have one of the most important jobs in society, then why aren't we giving them the respect and the attention that this job demands? They're the ones who are going to raise and encourage our generation to change the world and yet we're asking them to do all this, take care of their family and themselves, while teaching curriculum that they may not agree with, which is a whole nother topic. I can safely say that the footsteps I plan to follow to my mother in becoming a teacher have slowly and unfortunately been washed away because of these unfortunate circumstances. It is sad to see the decrease in students who want to go into teaching but simply can't afford it. There comes a point when we have to ask ourselves why this hasn't been neglected so long. Today, I ask you, with all due respect, as a student and a daughter of a teacher and someone who wants to go out and change the world for a better tomorrow, to give the people who have given me the power and the knowledge some respect and a better salary. I know my three minutes isn't going to change everything, but maybe it'll spark something. And I know this issue is not going away anytime soon. It's time for us to take a step in the right direction and look at our teachers for what they truly are. And for the sake of our future, give them a respect and salary that they deserve. I look at my accomplishments today and I'm proud because I know one day the people who helped me achieve them will truly be repaid. I just really hope it's sooner than later. Thank you so much for your time and please consider.
Thank you, Ms. Wilder. Anthony Calucci, and after that it'll be Vanessa Skipper and Jean Collins.
Well, I guess I don't need to say anything after that speech. My name is Anthony Calucci. I'm the president of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. Last week was Teacher Appreciation Week. Unfortunately, our teachers in Brevard started the week by reading an article in the USA Today that put them as the fourth most underpaid teachers in the nation. This is consistent with what I've been arguing all year long. Our pay is a blight on Brevard County. I think it's well past time you stop trying to rationalize this crisis as a cost of living issue. That is inaccurate and that is not the first study that illustrated our poor pay after adjusting for the cost of living. Furthermore, go to the Economic Policy Institute's Family Budget Calculator and you'll see that our cost of living is actually higher than Indian River and Volusia Counties. Then note that Indian River County teachers have a higher average pay even though their teachers have four years less experience than ours do and that Volusia teachers will see a seven and a half percent pay increase over the next three years. Regardless of the ruling that the special magistrate makes, understand it's past time to fix this shameful pay issue in Brevard County. On another note, I've emailed all of you concerns I have about teachers who retire, resign, or are not reappointed, missing out on a raise that was due to them this year. First off, I want to note that on my last proposal, I specifically introduced language that said all employees who are eligible for the raise based on their seventeen, eighteen evaluation will receive the raise regardless of employment status for the nineteen-twenty school year. Also, I need to state that this union asked for the hearing to be February eleventh, fourteenth, nineteenth, or March fifth, or fourth, or fifth. When those dates couldn't be accommodated by your council, I even asked for April third, fourth, fifth, fifteenth, seventeenth, or eighteenth. Your higher council offered one date, April twenty-third. It would be an injustice to punish our teachers because of your council's busy schedule. Speaking of your outside council, I hope you're well aware of the fact that this union just won our third straight arbitration. We will have a teacher return to a position he should have never been removed from and you will have to pay monetary damages to him. In your budget talks, does anyone tell you that you pay approximately thirty thousand dollars to fight these arbitration cases? Perhaps you shouldn't be so quick to go to arbitration against us. In these situations and many others, it pays sometimes literally to hear us out, to treat us as a partner rather than a nuisance. And because we are processing an inordinate amount of grievances under the leadership of the current superintendent, we're likely to be at arbitration again before you know it unless there's a change in the prevailing attitude of backing administrators no matter what while harshly dealing with teachers. Although I'm in regular communication with a few of you on this board, there are a couple of you who never contact me. If you don't want, you know, my insight, that's not my fault. But with that said, we'll soon have a magistrate's ruling, perhaps Thursday, and we won't be able to discuss our argument because of state statute. So please pick up the phone and give me a call if you have any questions about our presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Calucci. Skipper?
Vanessa Skipper, vice president of BFT. As I mentioned a couple of meetings ago, I wasn't prepared for the State Board of Education to ask me to remain at the mic so that they could respond to me and also ask me questions since I've been speaking here for six years and that's never happened at public comment. I appreciate the new back and forth response even though it has been said that obviously we don't get a chance to respond until a few weeks later, but I think that's a good thing because it actually gives me time to reflect upon my response. In addition, I never mind not having the last word if I feel as though my voice is being heard and my concerns are being valued. I did want to address the analogy of whether I'd want disruptive students marching into a class that had already started. If I had a large group of students who day after day came in together protesting something I was doing that they thought was unjust, I would, as a professional, address it as soon as possible because until I did, learning would certainly not take place. I have many times in my own career stopped a lesson and had what I called class meetings because there were just some times that my students needed to feel heard. It's not always easy to hear what they don't like or what they think should be done differently, but boy, did I learn that when I listened, truly listened and adjusted based on their needs, behavior changed. In addition, it was said that our rallies did not help get agreement on contract language that we requested, but that is hard to see when the contract language was passed across the table last August and in each subsequent session until impasse was declared December seventeenth. It wasn't until we began rallying in January and had four rallies in a row that we were called back to the table and negotiated seven pieces of outstanding language. That did not go unnoticed by teachers, the community, and the media. Furthermore, it was said that people needed the time to learn their positions before action could be taken. I want us all to reflect on what happens when someone is hired to teach in Brevard. If the person is lucky, they have one week from the minute they're given the keys to their classrooms to the minute students show up. They are expected to be ready. If they screw up, they're given a reprimand or it is noted in their evaluation, or if they're within their first year teaching in Brevard, they're dismissed. Do we have the same expectations for all positions in the district? Five days, turnkey ready. Again, we were ready the first session in August of 2018 with all of our proposals. You all know the rest of the story. If you want teachers to stop being angry and instead feel valued, heard, and supported, then please change your approach. I think that's already happening simply with our ability to have this public dialogue, but there's still some concerns. Please know that if I reach out to any one of you, it's because I have already notified appropriate district personnel and it's because I believe, as an elected official, you should know what I know and once you know, help fix it. It is frustrating to me and to teachers to hear district talking points repeated back to us when we bring up concerns. You all have the power within you to make change. Please do so. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Skipper. Mr. Collins?
Good evening. My name is Jean Collins. I wanted to talk for a few minutes about the cooperative organizations and booster clubs. I've had some emails going back and forth to two or three of you on the board there and I've had some concerns about how booster clubs are organized. If you read your rules and regulations, they're very contradictory. When I first started looking into the transgressions of one booster club, I wasn't really familiar with all of the rules, so I contacted Bill Mahias and he was kind enough to put me in the right direction. If you look at your rules and regulations, you'll see things on there like year ninety-two-eleven where it says that district employees are prohibited from signing on groups' checking accounts. So that would mean that coaches would not be able to uncheck any accounts. And this is happening in schools around Brevard County. I was talking casually to a couple of board members and even they, who are very knowledgeable about how the system works, in one set of rules, it says all money must be deposited in the school accounts, which seems to make a lot of sense to me. You have professional bookkeepers, you have auditors, you can take care of that money and know how it's run. But in most cases, these booster clubs are depositing the money in their own account and they are spending it as they wish. I was happy to see that the check that Matt showed today was made out to the Brevard County School Board and not to a particular booster club. Well, what happens is your rules and regulations say that you can't sign a checking account, but these need to be updated. There's nothing in them but debit cards. So here you have coaches or administrative people who are at the booster clubs have debit cards. There's no rhyme or reason to why you don't want them to sign checks, but you allow them to have debit cards. Money should be deposited, all money, as far as I'm concerned, should be put into the school accounts and passed back out to the booster clubs. One thing that Bill told me was that we subscribe to the Florida High School Athletic Association. Their rules and regulations should match ours. But if you read the parent organization rules that we have for internal fundraising and you check these, it's completely different. And I just want to quote this because I think this would clear something up. In addition, all monies collected, this is for fundraising, by athletic teams, should be deposited with the bookkeeper daily throughout the fundraiser. Any fundraiser involving student athletes must be deposited in their school club internal account according to BPS policy. Under no circumstances should money raised by student athletes be deposited inside a booster club account. So when we have our student athletes out there soliciting money, my son, Satellite, he was out there at the restaurants going table to table, asking people to sign their receipts over and bring money, that check was given to a booster club, made out to the booster club, and then lord knows what happens to it. I've sent your learned counsel some information, I've sent your CFO some information. I'm hoping to have a meeting with Dr. Mullins to show some of the specifics, but this is an area that I think you all need to get involved in because you had a transgression in two bookkeepers that you found out over the years had taken two-hundred-and-sixty, two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars and your solution was to provide armored cars. Well, this is a problem. You may think it's twenty, thirty dollars here and there. The booster club for the football association raised almost a hundred thousand dollars this year, spent forty-eight thousand dollars in expenses, and thank goodness they retained over fifty grand. So this is big money. And trying to find a list of all the booster clubs in Brevard County is difficult to do. They are soliciting money in the name of Brevard County football, basketball, in our case, wrestling. The public thinks that you all are controlling that money. Hopefully, like everything else, it's an eighty-twenty rule. Eighty or ninety percent of them are doing it wonderful and perfect and filing their 501(c)(3) paperwork and their ninety-nine easy form with the IRS. And I know that I found some that aren't.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
So I think it should be something that you guys look into.
Can you just tell me really quick? You referenced the policy in the beginning. I thought you said ninety-two-eleven.
Ninety-two-eleven, yeah. District employees are prohibited from signing any group's checking account. However, they may serve on the board's board of directors. So I know of a corporation where the coach is the only person on the checking account.
Where did you, I don't know of that policy, so I'm trying, where did you find that?
On your website.
Do we have a ninety-two-eleven in this?
I don't know, I'd have to look.
Okay.
I don't know all the numbers off the top of my head.
Okay, we've written that down, we're going to look into it. If you want to head to the back, have you met Ms. Cirker, our CFO, before?
I have and I have given her some information earlier.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Collins, we appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Does any board member wish to address any of the speakers this evening? I just want to, oh, thank the girls, Ms. Wilder and Ms. Hudson. Thank you, we appreciate you coming to speak and being active student participants. Congratulations on your graduation. You're welcome. And Ms. Skipper, I appreciated your comments tonight greatly. I think the tone was different than usual and I heard everything that you said, although I think you're talking to the girls. I was just saying I appreciated your comments, Ms. Skipper. They were, it was a whole different tone to me and I heard what you said and I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Ms. Steskovic, I would like to just, in response to Mr. Collins, just verify that leading and learning, our staff has been following up with his concerns.
Okay.
So he has made them aware and they are addressing those. And Ms. Cirker.
Great, thank you so much, sir.
And chairman, we do have ninety-two-eleven is the correct number.
We do have a ninety-two-eleven?
And we are currently working with Ms. Cirker right now, we're working on those financial policies.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Collins. Moves us on to the consent agenda. Dr. Mullins?
There are thirty-two agenda items under this category, one with prior information.
What are the wishes of the board? Oh, does any member wish to pull any of these items? Okay. What are the wishes of the board?
To approve?
Second.
Oh, I don't know what to do with that.
I have one.
Miss Campbell, motion by Ms. Campbell, second by Ms. Belford. Ms. McDougal, second by Ms. McDougal. Is there any discussion? Motion passes. Motion passes 5-0. We'll move on to the action agenda. Dr. Mullins?
Ms. Deskovic, the first item is G42 on Department-School Initiated Agreements.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Belford, second by Ms. McDougal. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins?
Item G43 is on purchasing solicitations.
Wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Belford, second by Mr. Susan. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion passes 5-0. Is that the last action item? Sure is. Okay, we'll move on to the information agenda, which includes items for board review, and will be brought back for action at a subsequent meeting. No action will be taken on these items tonight. Dr. Mullins?
There are four items under the information category.
Would any board member like to discuss one of those items? We're now on board member reports. Does anyone have anything to add under board member reports? You can ask in the microphone. No? You don't have to.
I was just wondering if, you know, we're all different champions for different departments. Is this...
This is the correct time to report on your department, for sure.
All right. Well, I'll go first.
Okay.
I am the champion for my favorite department, but not that I don't like the other departments. But I am the champion for HR. And Dr. Theddy and I meet on a regular basis. And there's a lot of, I guess, cool and new, interesting things that are going on in the department, and Dr. Theddy has jumped in full force, and I so appreciate all she's doing in that department for us. One thing that's new is the... They're starting... I hope I'm not giving this away. The Rookie of the Year, that we're looking at. Who's the new Rookie of the Year? The schools are nominating, and we're going to celebrate the Rookie of the Year, which I think is a great idea to help our new teachers, because being a new teacher can be very difficult in our system. Also, they've done a lot of reaching out different ways to recruit people with videos. They're having a, I think, if I'm not wrong, Dr. Theddy, you're developing a video for new teachers as they come onboard? Am I... Nope.
It's a video of new teachers talking about the work.
Okay. I was close. Anyhow, I need to take better notes. But some of the things she's working on, and what they're working on...